Okay, can you see my screen, everybody?
I would say five.
Okay, great. So I'm just gonna pull this up now. Okay, here we go. Just when I start talking about it, it'll make sense. Okay, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the continuation of the Irish Town Road Improvement Platte from last meeting. I'm gonna skip over the introduction, pages one, pages two, and we're gonna start on pages three. We resubmitted the plans to Arrow Consulting. He was our engineer for the project. And town staff also did another review. They did a really good job cleaning up the plan. And we are gonna recommend conditionally approving the plan tonight. But first, I want to talk about the, under the comment section, I said the applicant has requested to close Irish Town Road up to Brookfield Drive. So as you can see, here's Irish Town Road, if you can see my mouse. And they want to close it up to Brookfield Drive here during Phase One of construction. And they stated this is gonna be a maximum of 90 days. The applicant has provided a detour plan, which I provide all of you through email of both construction phases, one and two. The, we're requesting, the mayor's requesting that the planning commission make a recommendation on approving or denying the request, which is then to be provided to the mayor and Board of Commissioners at their December 8th meeting, 2020, for consideration. As you can see here, the detour plan's pretty simple. Basically, if you're coming from South Seaton Avenue, you're going to take a left on the West Main Street and then right, right in the beginning of Brookfield Development at Timber Mill Run. And then you'll go up to Brookfield Drive and vice versa. So for Phase Two, they're gonna have one lane closed, single lane closed between Brookfield Drive and Lot 19. Lot 19 is the northernmost lot. Flagging operations for two-way traffic between Brookfield Drive and Lot 19. So a maximum of 90 days for construction of Phase One. And they do have to go through the town and get a street closure permit. So this isn't going to turn into the bridge project where it takes, you know, two, three, four years. We have more say since this is, this is a town-owned road. So they do have to go through the process and there will be penalties if it goes over the 90 days. Are there any questions or comments on this before I move on?
I don't, Zach, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, who is this?
This is Pauline Chasker. And we happen to live in Brookfield. And a question that I have, I don't know whether it's come up because I wasn't aware of this until we chatted about something else. Are there going to be any speed bumps put onto Brookfield Drive at any time? Because once Irish Town is open and you've got Tracked on one side, people are already speeding on Brookfield. And if there aren't, there's already three speed bumps just on Timber Mill between Main Street and Brookfield. But there are none on Brookfield. And once that opens up, you're gonna have a speedway through there. And I'm very concerned because there are a lot of children here, a lot of bikers and walkers. I don't know if that's come up in early discussions or not.
Sorry about that. Um, so no, that's actually a really good point. John, Mr. Demit, Christine, do you want to comment on this? Is there any kind of temporary speed bumps that can be placed on Brookfield?
Well, I don't mean temporary. I think they need to be permanent, like the ones on Timber Mill are.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to, I'll have to discuss that with our Public Works Director and see if there's something we can, we can do for that. I will take your concern to the mayor and town manager tomorrow. I have a meeting with them tomorrow. So I will bring this up to them and then we will have an answer for you at our December 8th Board of Commissioners meeting. If that's okay. So you say in Brookfield only?
Well, all the way from Tracked to Irish Town, it goes to Pembroke, the subdivision, and then Brookfield continues on through Brookfield. But that whole area there, there's enough traffic now and there's gonna be a lot more once Irish Town opens up. And so I'm concerned with the hazards now, but it's gonna be even worse after it opens up.
Okay, thank you. I will take that to them tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One question that I would like to have, a little concerned about the timing on this and see how this all plays together when we have this additional traffic coming into the, to the subdivision. So basically, my question is this. Is the current scheduling for all of this work being done for the additional houses to be built on a lot of the lots within the subdivision? I was wondering that while this detour would be in place, would there also be construction traffic going on as these houses are being built? Will that all occur at the same time? Or will they indeed be separate times?
My understanding it's gonna be occurring all at the same time. However, Mr. Demit may be able to speak better on that, on the timing of the development. I know right now there's only one active house.
Right.
So I don't know if there's gonna be one at a time, two at a time, or if he has any idea about that. Mr. Demit, do you have any comments on that?
Um, the 19 lots on Irish Town Road won't be built while we're doing this work. Because, but the lots that are not built on in the subdivision will, some of them will be built during, during this process, but it depends on the sales. And Ryan Holmes is building them homes. And I'm sure there will be some going on while we're doing this because we're gonna try to get this done based on their sales. If their sales are good and it looks like they're gonna need more lots, then we're gonna start on this road. And so I'm sure there'll be some overlap, but we are limiting it to 90 days. So I'm really hoping to do it in less than 90 days, but that will be depending on the weather, partially. I like to make one comment about the Brookfield Drive and speed bumps. I understand we don't want people speeding in there, but that road was designed to be a thorough road. That's why there's no houses that back up to it, that driveways that come out on it. It was designed, we could not put any houses on that road because it was meant to be a higher-speed road to travel to get, at least through Brookfield. Now, it changed going through Pembroke. But just so you know that that's, I don't know what the mayor wants to do with it, with the speed bumps, but it was designed at least to, through Brookfield to not have people on that road, other than the sidewalk on the side of it.
Thank you, Mr. Demit. I did not know that. So I appreciate those comments.
It was actually a bypass. It's supposed to go all the way around the town, hit 15 on the, on the north side, which don't think that will ever happen now.
Sure. Did that answer your question, Keith?
Uh, yeah, I do have a second question. Can you, can you explain what are the conditions that we call for? Basically, half of the Irish Town Road to be entirely cut, shut off while you're constructing the road versus the other half that you're gonna be able to do a one-way, one-lane working around the, the, the construction work. I'm just wondering what's going on of what half of it that you can't do so that the entire stretch of the, of the roadwork can be done with keeping just one lane open all the time and not have to do the detour at all?
It has to do with the grades. We gotta cut the grades down on that. We're not just, normally, we would just improve one side of the road and keep the existing vertical grades. But we've, the road's designed to redo the whole road and to lower the grades in places that you can't really lower one lane without the other lane. It's just too, it's just too difficult to actually have that happen and have traffic not wait for hours on end. I mean, we could do it, but they might have to wait for an hour before we let them through.
Sure. Okay. I was just curious, what, what was, what was happening that you couldn't, I understand now. Thank you.
And I, I like to add, it's not 50/50. If, if this is approved this way, then that 90-day period, 75% of Irish Town Road will be done or, you know, improved. And then the, it'd be less disruption. It'll be quicker construction time, you know, the timeframe of construction will shrink. And, you know, we can be in and out of there very quickly and 75% of that Irish Town Road improvement is, is that part showing right now on the screen, whereas you got 25% for the one-way traffic in Phase Two.
And we're talking about the 90 days being just that time that that stretch where the red Xs are will be shut down. We'll still need some time where there'll be one-way traffic in addition to that.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Zach, did you want to go ahead with everything else, or do you want us to handle this one part of it by itself?
If you could please handle this one part first.
Okay. Okay. Members of the Commission, do any of you have any other questions regarding the plan for the detour?
Mr. Chair, I only have one.
Yes, who is this?
This is Joe, sorry.
Okay.
And my question is this, I guess this is going to be posed to the, to the developers. What if the proposed detour is denied? What are the repercussions with, with building out the remaining lots of Brookfield?
If we can't, if we can't improve Irish Town Road, then those 19 lots won't have their utilities there. So we could build out the rest of Brookfield, but those would not be done. And frankly, I don't know, no one ever cares what the economics are to a developer, but right now my costs are running almost, it's almost a wash of what it's gonna cost to do, do all this roadwork and what I'm gonna get out of them lots. So I don't really care if we do them. But I know the mayor would like it done, and I know the town and the community would like it done. So if you guys want to deny this, it's fine with me. Ryan Holmes would like it, because they like to build more houses. But frankly, the cost of doing this roadwork and what they can afford to pay for these lots. And, and if, if too much gets added on, more expensive, I'm gonna be upside down on it, and then I won't do it.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Would somebody care to make a motion on whether to recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners to approve this plan of the detour layout in these phases has been presented to us? Or to not recommend approval? Somebody cared up to make a motion to, to something of that degree?
Just to clarify, Mr. Chair, you're, you're talking about all three phase, oh, the graphs on all three of these charts?
That, that is correct. The three, yes.
Two phases, only two phases. The first would be 90 days to close, and then the second would be to finish with one lane.
Okay.
So, yeah, the two phases together as the plan. So we're, we're, we're gonna be voting on this plan of two phases.
Okay, then I'm prepared to make a motion that the, the planning commission recommend to the town Board of Commissioners that, to approve these two phases for the partial closure and
Okay.
and the single lane closure of Irish Town Road.
Okay, so we have a motion to recommend approval of the two-phase plan to the Board of Commissioners. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second is made by Joyce. Any last comments or questions? Okay, we will do this with a vote in here by roll call. So, and when I call your name, please tell me if you do, if you vote a yes, meaning you approve of the motion? Or say no if you do not approve of the motion? Joyce?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Joe?
I abstain due to the fact the Board of Commissioners will be, we will be voting on this on the 8th.
Okay. And either chair vote yes. So we have three, four, four yes, and one I'm staying. So the motion carries.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And I will take that to the board and mayor on the 8th. And they will make the final determination. Okay, so going on to the next section, staff, we are recommending conditionally approving Irish Town Road Improvement Platte with the following conditions. I won't read them all, but there are 17. They're basically very simple conditions. I do want to make a correction, however, to condition number four. We, I reached out to Frederick County and they will be requiring the bond slash letter of credit. So basically, we don't want to have Mr. Demit double bond. It wouldn't make sense. It wouldn't be economically prudent. So a letter of credit or bond to, it should stay in the amount approved by the town engineer. So crossing out in the amount of 1,043,000, et cetera shall be provided to the town. So we still have to approve the amount. However, the bond will be provided to Frederick County to hold. And we'll just have a copy of it. Other than that, the other seven or 16 conditions should stay.
Okay. Are there questions from the members of the Commission? Questions to Zach? I have to, who's talking? Who's talking?
Might be background noise.
Oh, okay. It sounded like somebody was, okay. Any Commission members have a question to Zach on what he has presented?
So to, to clarify, when we get to making a motion, this is Mark. What you were just referring to, Zach, should we still include part of that number four condition?
Yeah, basically, all we're done for number four is striking out in the amount of 1,043,000, et cetera.
Okay.
And just put in the amount approved by the town engineer.
In the amount approved by the town engineer?
Yeah, I think there's some questions on the amount that Mr. Demit wanted to talk with his engineers. So we're gonna let him work that out.
Yeah, Zach, just so you know, I, I hadn't, did not have the estimate in front of me. And I think we're really, the numbers are really close. Our contractor is lower, but he does not include a lot of stuff that needs to be in there, which the, the engineer put in there. So that's why it's higher than I thought, than the, but we can talk about that later. But, yeah, the bond will go to the county. So I, I don't think we have a problem with the amount that's already approved, provided the county approves it.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? I have one question for you, Zach.
Sure.
Just want to make sure that when we're talking about conditionally, possibly conditionally approving this improvement plan with the, with the items that you have listed, listed here, what are there, there are 9, 10, 17, 17 conditions. Were the, all those conditions that we had seen in the previous memo given to us at the last meeting, there were about 46 conditions. Have those all been taken care of, or do we need to still worry about those conditions as well?
No, they cleaned up all but 17. So that's why.
So these are, these are basically 17 new conditions that, that, that's all we need to worry about.
Correct.
Okay, so one makes that clear.
Sure.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak on behalf of the developer or otherwise on this presentation? Anyone else wish to speak? I'm seeing nothing. Okay. Does a member of the Commission wish to make a motion?
This is Mark. I'll make a motion. I moved to conditionally approve the Irish Town Road Improvement Platte with the 17 conditions that's outlined in the staff memo and with the slight amendment to condition number four as outlined by Zach.
Okay, motion has been made to approve the application with the 17 conditions listed in the memo that we have, along with the slight modification to condition number four. Do I have a second of that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion has been seconded by Joyce. Any last comments or questions?
No.
I'm seeing none. Okay, again, this will be a vote by roll call. When I call your name, please give us your vote. A yes would be in favor of the motion. A no would be against the motion. First, Joyce?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We have five votes for the motion, none against. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Demit.
You're welcome.
Okay, next we have a new business item. The Brittany Fritz Property or Family Child Care Center. Zach, would you like to tell us something about it?
Yeah, sure. So this is something the mayor, Kathy, and town staff and myself are extremely excited about. As we all know, this was a very rough building. So we're really happy to see it being put to a good use and a small business is able to make corrections and, and really boost up the town a little bit. So we're excited about this. So this is the site plan for the Brittany Fritz property, also known as Miss B's Family Child Care. This is a site plan that's required by the zoning ordinance. The property address is 502 East Main Street. And this is in the general commercial B2 zoning district. The proposed project consists of the renovation of a 3,546 square foot existing building into a daycare center. The new facility will house a maximum of six full-time employees and up to 70 children. Interior work to include complete demolition and renovation, to include four classrooms, a gym, art room, staff break room, front office cafeteria, child bathrooms, and one adult bathroom. Exterior work to include roof and gutter rehabilitation or replacement, railing, lattice, pressure washing, and paint the entire exterior building. Site work includes 11 new parking spaces, one loading space, parking loading space line painting, trash enclosure, landscaping, and fencing. The proposed project of the subject property is consistent with the town of Emmitsburg zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. I've been talking with Brittany for probably well over six months on this project. So I'm, I know that she's glad to get this hopefully over with and start construction. It's gonna be a long process. So as you can see, the application date in tonight's planning commission meeting, we provided it to those following agencies for review on October 19th. Aero Engineering had some comments. I had comments. S H A has no comments at the moment until they see the traffic impact study, if there is one. Under comments, there's just a few things. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go through everything, or do you want to just ask individually questions?
Well, um, I guess, let's go through the questions first because I know we got to come back to some very, some specific items that we need to, need to vote on.
Okay.
As part of it.
So the first two points are real simple, and Chris can make those adjustments with no problems. Provide additional details for the sidewalk ramps and add dimensions to the loading zone. Just, that's just so the contractor is aware of how big it needs to be. The third point, staff supports a waiver to town code 1616110B. This is the recently approved landscape buffer yard two screening requirements, and this is to the western property boundary. And this is why we support it for the following reasons. Number one, the applicant is installing a six-foot stockade fence. Number two, screening materials and landscaping will encroach upon the adjoining property line at full maturity due to the distance of the existing structure to the property line. Three, the applicant has agreed to plant the required trees and shrubs elsewhere on the property. And four, the neighboring property owner has expressed support of this waiver as long as the six-foot fence is maintained at all times. This waiver recommendation does exclude town code 161610B5, which is loading space screening, and also 161610B6 dumpster screening. Waivers are permitted in the town code in accordance with 1632020. We also support a waiver of town code 161610C. This is the street trees for the following reason. The three required street trees per the code would be planted below existing power lines, which would cause a hazard at maturity. And I do not believe the electric company would give the permission anyway. So that's why we support that. Are there any questions on those two waivers? Okay, so moving forward, they are requesting a reduction in the number of parking spaces from 12 to 11. We're recommending approval of that. And then here's where we were just, we're just talking about the, the sections for the buffer yard screening and the street trees. Mr. Chairman, do you want to go over those three first before we move on to the next comments?
I think we ought to do each one separately, yes.
Okay.
Take care of those separately, each one being an item that we need to approve.
Okay.
And then we'll take care of these parts of it. And then for the, like, the first three items there, we'll take care of separately. And then, then we'll go into the fourth one, which would be the entire site plan as a whole for the final, the final vote. Does that make any sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so, well, first of all, let me ask, does anyone wish to speak on behalf of the, the applicant for this project? Anyone?
And Mrs. Fritz is here with her husband, Mr. Fritz.
Okay, Brittany Fritz. Do you wish to say anything at this time?
No.
You certainly, certainly don't have to. Okay, very good. That's fine. That's fine. Okay. All right, like, like we said here, when you look under the suggested motions for this project, we, we got it broken down into four parts. The first part we will take care of is when it says to, to move to approve or disapprove the proposed reduction in the number of parking spaces, knowing that it's, there are 12 required, but they're proposing to provide 11. So we'll just take that in itself first. Any questions or comments about the issue of parking?
Just, just a quick question. So why is it you're okay with reducing it by one space?
So basically, this is an existing structure and, you know, space is limited. They are required to do a loading zone, which most likely they'll never use, but it is requirement per the code. They can't put an extra space near the sidewalk because in the code there is a 10-foot buffer restriction. And that's where they are adding the bike rack. So basically, is a ten-foot buffer restriction, and that's where they are adding the bike rack. So basically, it's because of space limitations.
Okay. Zach, can I say something for a minute?
Sure.
Chris Gaus. In the code, it doesn't specifically outline how many spaces you need for a childcare center.
That's correct. It gives the zoning administrator discretion.
But it's it's just not a hard fixed number for childcare. That's what I wanted to point out.
A good point.
So Zach, can you can you explain where that number twelve came from?
Sure. So Chris reached out to me when he was designing this site plan, and he told me what he thought it was appropriate to match the closest facility. And I agree with him. So it was, I think it was three hundred square feet per. What was it, Chris? I'm sorry.
It was it was one per every three hundred square foot of building.
Yeah, so we felt that was appropriate. His experience and my experience, we feel that's appropriate.
And this is Joe. Just just to go back, I think history, if history, if my memory serves me correctly here, I believe Mr. Gauss also helped us out with the Mr. Phelan's property, the insurance brokers of Maryland property. I remember there was a question regarding the number of spaces, handicapped spaces, and where they'd be placed in the loading dock as well. So I think we I think we changed something in that as well and approved that.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions regarding parking? Okay, I guess I I need to bring up a couple again.
Let me pop the site plan so everyone can see.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So. You didn't see in your.
Yeah, that's good.
Where I guess.
Yeah, that's good.
The change that you made, I don't know.
Hey, Joyce, I think your mic's hot.
My mic?
Yeah, your mic's hot. We can hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me?
We can hear in the background.
Oh.
Okay, Keith, is that okay?
Okay, I'm I'm a little concerned about knowing that you say you're dealing with would have six employees and up to seventy children. Is that correct?
You want me to answer that, or you want Brittany to answer?
Yeah, I don't care. Brittany Brittany preferred.
Yeah, so there'll be six employees, which one would be myself, and then up to seventy children.
Now, let me ask you this. Is it is it customary that all of the children coming here pretty much show up at the same time of day?
No, so like my childcare now, I have enough at six. They come, a couple of them come at six, and it goes all the way till ten AM. So it's all spread out and same with pickup. Some get picked up at two thirty, the other ones are later, and then it gets to six o'clock and the last one leaves. So it's definitely spread out.
Okay, because to tell you what what's kind of concerning me is the amount of space that's being provided on this site plan for vehicles to come in, to park, to drop off kids, to turn around. I see a lot of lot of vehicle movement taking place, and I really wonder, do we have enough room for all of that? Particularly, I'm thinking about in the morning hours, when you probably have the majority of your children showing up, is there going to really be room there for everybody to turn around, park the car, take kids out into the building? Is there really enough space to take care of that many kids? So can you answer that?
Are we good? Am I talking?
I don't see the issue. We have, she has twelve a day easily here at my house. And when they rotate in and leave, and that's simply my driveway, that they bring children in and they change and they go back out, and that's on DePaul Street. Coming in and dropping off, taking your child in and simply dropping off, getting changing out, I think maxi would maybe have max. I mean, you're talking at full capacity of seventy children, which is, I don't know if that's going to be likely or not. It could only be maybe thirty. I don't I don't know. But actually, at seventy, I'm thinking maybe ten cars potentially at once, maybe?
Up to ten cars at once?
At seventy kid at seventy children.
Yeah, right. Okay, when a vehicle comes in, either to, well, I'm thinking about when there's when the parking spaces are taken, or they just simply want to stop the vehicle, drop somebody out. Where are they going to be able to turn around?
They would back out and pull back out.
Back out into the street?
No. If you pull in, if you pull in and park in a spot, drop off, you back back out. It's like, I think it's a extra wide entrance or something like that is what the state poured for that sidewalk. It's like, Chris would know the measurements, but it's extra wide for in and out. I mean, I don't really.
Yeah, you got certainly not room for for too late for traffic in two directions at the entry. But I'm still trying to visualize vehicles parking, and it's time for them to get out. So they might have some cars behind them, and they got to back up and turn around to get out. You're saying you really don't see a problem here?
No.
Okay, well, I'm taking your word for it because I've I've never seen this kind of an operation before.
It's amazing what happens at my residence, how they come and go out. And when I get home from work, I park in a different spot until now they're done here on DePaul Street. I'll park across the street, and then when daycare's closed, I'll move my truck, or I just leave it there.
Okay, very good, very good. Okay, anybody else have any questions about the parking?
Just to follow up on that a little bit. And yeah, I do kind of share your concerns, Mr. Chairman. But you know, I hope that Mr. Fritz is correct that it won't be a problem. But but also, I'd like to ask the question. So there's a maximum of six staff persons. So do you anticipate that those six staff persons will be parked there permanently all day long? So they're taking up six parking spots?
Kentucky.
So when you have a childcare, you don't have all them staffed together at one time. You just spread them out where obviously a person who's working full-time forty hours, they can't be there from a twelve-hour day to the next twelve-hour day. You have to break it up so that it's done. They're not going to be there at the same time now.
So how many do you anticipate at one time?
I would roughly say three.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Let me just throw this in there if you don't mind. That aisle way is thirty-two feet across. So you have plenty of room to back, even if there's a car that's sitting there with without, you know, being in a space. You could almost do a turn in that thirty-two feet, you know, if you had to.
Okay. Anything else? Would somebody care to make a motion?
Yes, this is Mark. I'll move to approve the proposed reduction in the number of required parking spaces from twelve to eleven.
Okay, the motion has been made to approve the reduction from twelve to eleven spaces. Do I have a second?
This is Joe, and I second that.
That motion has been seconded by Joe. We will vote by roll call. If your name is called, a yes vote would be to approve the the motion, and no would be to be against it. Joyce. Joyce, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Now, yes, we can now.
Oh, maybe I ought to get a little closer.
Okay, what is your vote, Joyce?
Yes.
Okay, Bernard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We got unanimous, five votes yes, none opposed. Motion carries. Okay. The next item would be the the waiver regarding the the buffer yard screening. Again, to re to repeat what was said about this particular item, we're asked to vote, and we're asked to waive the requirement for the buffer yard screening on a western property. The solid six-foot fence must be maintained on the western property boundary at all times. But this will be a waiver for that. So we're looking for a motion to approve the waiver requiring that item. Is there any discussion or questions? No questions? Is there a motion for this item?
This is Joe. I'll make a motion to weigh the requirements of town code sixteen sixteen ten B regarding the buffer yard screening on the western property boundary with the with the with the conditions of the six-foot fence.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, motion has been made, excuse me, to weigh the requirement for the for the screening. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it. Oh, go ahead.
One at a time, please. Once somebody do it again.
Mark will second.
Mark, okay, the motion to to the second, I'm sorry, to second the motion has been made by Mark. Any other last questions about this item? Okay, to vote, roll call. Joyce?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, five votes yes, none against. The motion carries. Next item, as to waive the requirement for the whether the tree, the street trees. This would for those trees that would be in the way of the power lines, this waiver would then not require those trees to be put there. Any questions about that?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the waiver for the street trees?
Mark will make a motion to waive the requirements of town code sixteen point sixteen point one one point C.
Motion has been made to to weigh the requirement for the for the trees. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second has been made by Joyce. Any last questions? Okay, we'll take a vote by roll call. Joyce?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, five votes for, none against, and the motion carries. Okay, now we're down to the fourth and last one, which would be the big one to, actually, we have been asked to consider tabling this application in order to give the applicant more time to make the corrections identified in the eleven conditions. Comments or questions about the what's been what's being recommended to us here regarding this? This is the recommendation is to table. Is that correct, Zach?
That's correct, and I'll I'll explain why if that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. So the main concern is number three. Town code requires the adequate public public facilities ordinance approval is required in order to determine if a traffic traffic impact analysis or study is required in accordance with town code, chapter fourteen. It's kind of concern, and it's kind of not a concern, because we sent it over to State Highway Administration, and they had no comments. So basically, it's us that up to us to determine however it is required that they fill out the application. Her engineer, Mrs. Fritz's engineer is going to have to fill out our adequate public facilities ordinance application and basically determine how many, you know, how much traffic is going to be generated at peak hours. So we're just waiting on that from her engineer. All the other comments are pretty simple. I don't think they have any problems with them. They're really simple corrections. Also, they did provide in reference to number nine, condition number nine, they did provide a lighting plan. We have two or three brief comments on those which will be added to the staff memo the next time around, next month. But we are recommending tabling until we receive that information, because the planning commission does have to approve the traffic impact analysis or study if it's required. But we'll know more in the coming weeks. Brittany, do you think you can get your engineer can get something to me the next couple of weeks, ready for the next planning commission meeting?
Um, they should be able to. I actually met Lee Lambert out there today, was moved out from State Highway Administration. And I brought that up to him, and I was asking questions about it since I figured he'd be a good person to ask the State Highway. And like you, they were like, I don't see the problem here, but I'll get you in touch with who to tell you pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, if the State Highway comes back and tells us nothing's required, it's their roadway. However, we still have jurisdiction in the matter. So we just need some more information regarding the traffic counts.
That's the I'll I'll reach out to Lee tomorrow, I guess, an email or something, and get the he was going to put me in touch with that what could really point me in that direction for that because I'm new to this. I don't know anything about traffic impact study. But like I said, he didn't see he didn't see a problem with it. So I'll get that information.
Okay, very good.
I believe I sent you a guy's name that does that kind of stuff in an email about two weeks ago, Traffic Concepts.
Okay.
Yeah, Traffic Concepts, you've used them in the past. They're, you know, they're a good company. There's a couple of other ones.
All right. Okay, anyone like to make any comments or questions about what is being proposed here?
Mr. Chair, this is Joe. I have one comment and one question.
Okay.
My comment is this, I wasn't planning on a meeting on December twenty eighth. I will not be able to make that meeting. I don't know if that'll be a deterrent in us tabling that this evening. If if we do proceed, and I'm not there, I'm sorry, the first one I missed here on the planning commission, but I have utmost faith in my fellow commissioners here to get the job done. My other quest, my question is for Zach, part of one, one of your email attachments had Ms. Fritz's sign, and the reference about tinting the windows, there's a little little comment on there for Ms. Fritz. Is that something we're going to be discussing? Is that sign and her intentions intending the windows permissible per town code? Because I fully supported it. I mean, I like I like their sign. I think I think it's great. And I understand the idea of tinting the windows to with kids and all.
Yeah, yeah, I I didn't, Mrs. Fritz didn't send me the dimensions. However, tinting is permissible.
Good.
They have so much windows there, I believe, you know, that sign's not going to be over fifteen percent, which is the the town code requirement for windows. So I don't see foresee a problem.
Okay, that that's great. It would that be? Would that be discussed on the twenty eighth then?
No, no, that's the zoning permit application.
All right, great. All right, thanks.
Sure.
I like I like the sign and the idea, though.
I just.
Yeah.
It does look nice.
Anyone else care to make a comment or question? I don't think that our planning commission has ever had a meeting in December before. Not saying that that could. Not saying that that couldn't be done, but I'm just saying that that just doesn't seem to be, has happened before.
Yeah, that is the date in the code, what the code requires, but you know, the code's flexible, so if you want to do it earlier, I mean, I want to give them plenty of time in order to get that study done, because, or get the information done, because that will take a few weeks.
Well, I guess what I'm think wondering we're talking about what, eleven items that are on these conditions. We have certainly granted conditional approvals before with a lot more conditions than this. That would it be feasible to just give a conditional approval at this time and not have to visit this another time? If we were to give that and just include these eleven items as as a condition of approval?
So, the planning commission or the code actually requires the planning commission to approve the analysis and or the study. However, you can conditionally approve it. You know, if a study's not required, then it doesn't have to come back to you. So, I mean, that makes sense.
So like, we would only have to deal with it again if there is a plan that a traffic study plan that needs our approval.
Correct, correct.
That would be the only situation. Otherwise, we could take care of it all tonight.
That's correct.
Okay, I think that I offered that as an alternative to tabling this thing for another time.
Well, I will state that I was going to bring it up at the end of the meeting, but we will have to have a planning commission meeting in December. There's some, there's two other items that are going to be on your table.
There's something else that would have to be done in December?
Yes, there's another plan. There's an addition plat that's come before, that's been submitted, and there's also going to be a code amendment to the code to be approved or denied.
Okay.
Is
You're working, it's overtime, Zach.
I know, I'm making a lot of money, I tell you. But is there any, I mean, is the twenty eighth really hanging people up? You, you want to change it?
Here's the reason, I'll just say it. It's my middle kid's birthday, and you know, with everything going on this year, it's kind of hard doing parties and stuff. So,
Yeah.
Poor guy was born three days after Christmas, but um yeah, it's his birthday. So, I'm going to excuse myself that evening.
I mean, we can, we can make it to twenty ninth, the thirtieth. I mean, it doesn't have to be the, you know, the fourth Monday. We can, the chair has the discretion to change it.
Mr. Chairman Bernard? Just, Zach, can you explain one more time, if we were to approve it conditionally, does it keep the project moving?
Yeah, so basically, it's conditionally approved based on the eleven conditions. So, just as any other plan, it moves to administrative approval then.
Okay.
So, you know, once they complete each task, we check it off and I'll do an inspection, and then I'll issue the, the, the use in occupancy permit. So, basically, if you conditionally approve it tonight and no traffic impact analysis is required, you won't see this plan again.
Okay, so we can move that one on whether we have a meeting in December or not?
Correct.
Got it.
Okay.
And this, this is Joe. The December items that you are proposing to us can't wait till January?
The one can, unfortunately, the addition plat can't. It's for rudders. They are requesting an addition plat. There's a, to sum it up quickly, there's a really awkward lot above the rudders lot and above the Maryland State Administrative Lot. Basically, what they're doing is they're chopping that lot pretty much in half and then adding it to the two lots, so they both have street frontage. If that makes any sense. So they, we have to, we have to have a meeting in December to review that one.
Okay. Alright.
Because it will hold up the rudders plan.
Okay. Alright, so the floor is still open for comments or questions regarding the the plan that we have before us. Anyone else care to make comments here? Are we trying to figure out which way to go?
No.
So, I'm kind of agreeing with you, Keith, that we could conditionally approve this and at least that'll keep the December meeting a little shorter possibly.
Sure.
So, if Zach is okay with that, absolutely. I'm going to go ahead and move that we conditionally approve the Brittany Fritz site plan with the following, how many were there? Following eleven conditions. Period.
Okay. Very good. And a motion has been made by Mark to conditionally approve the application. Those conditions being the eleven items that are shown in the memo that we have
Right.
given from Zach.
I should have said that in my motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
One second. If you're going to do that, I need to actually add some conditions. I'm sorry. This is for the lighting plan, because the lighting plan was reviewed.
Yeah.
I apologize, one second.
Well, can we okay, because you, okay, item nine currently says a lighting plan shall be provided.
We do have some comments, though.
Okay.
They provided the lighting plan. However, there's three additional comments. So, you can scratch number nine. So, a lighting plan shall be provided, because they already did that. And we need to add three additional conditions.
Okay.
So, yes.
Did Vic get ahold of you about a couple of those comments?
No, he did not.
Okay, because that was on his plan to do, I think, in the last day or two. We didn't really understand a couple of them.
Okay. Let's go over them, because the planning commission is not aware of them.
Okay, well then, we'll just do that another day.
Let's do it right now.
Okay.
Okay, so condition number, so we're going to make number ten, number nine, number eleven, number ten. And then number, condition number eleven is a scale shall be provided in accordance with town code, and then we get the, the town code section. So, that's pretty simple.
Yep.
Number two. I'm sorry, number twelve. The name, seal, and signature of the registered engineer. And Bernard, I'll send these to you.
Okay.
The name, seal, and signature of the registered engineer responsible for the plan shall be provided. That's just basically the engineer who provided.
Yeah, there, there's, there's two we know about. It's the other one that we, me and Vic talked about. We didn't quite understand why the comment was made.
Sure. So, let me share my screen and show let's see. The lighting plan. Okay, so let me read this first. So, the parking areas, main entrances and exits which are open to the public shall be lighted to a minimum average of two foot candles and a maximum of six foot candles. So, basically, what this is saying let's go to the lighting plan. That's not the lighting plan. So, as you can see, there existing pole lights, or excuse me, proposed pole light here. Existing over here. Existing here. They're not providing enough light at the entrance.
Okay.
Per the code, it has to be at least two.
Now, doesn't it say an average of two over the entire site?
Let me see.
Because I believe he does have an average on there.
Sure. Is the average for the main entrance two?
The average, the average of the parking lot is three point something. I don't, it's on the plan. I, I can't move your plan around to find it, so I'd have to pull it up, but there's somewhere it says the average rate.
There.
Yep. And that's for the parking lot. And which is, I believe that is how the code reads.
Okay, I'm okay with that. If the planning commission's okay with that, I'm okay with that. So, let's cross that one out. And also, number four, I don't agree with this. I don't read the code this way. So, it says pole mounted lamps are subject to yard setback requirements. I don't read it that way. So, it's my recommendation, we, we scratch number four as well.
Yeah, and this is, this is Joe. I'm just happy there's going to be lighting regardless. It's so dark down there. So, this is great.
Absolutely. So, if you're okay with scratching, if the planning commission's okay with scratching number three and number four, I'm completely okay with that. So, it will be a total of twelve conditions.
I'm lost here. Which ones are being scratched off of the original eleven?
So, the only one being scratched is number nine, since they provided that.
Okay, so that gets us to ten.
Then we're going to add on, show on the screen here, number one and two only.
Okay, so we will have a total of twelve.
Yep.
Okay. Mark, you want to rephrase your, your motion?
Yes, I'll rephrase my motion. I moved to conditionally approve the Brittany Fritz site plan with the following twelve conditions that were outlined in the staff memo and with the presentation Zach just made.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second made by Joyce. So, we have any, oh, any last questions or comments before we vote? Saying none? The vote is to conditionally approve the application with the twelve conditions that have been stated to us. By roll call, Joyce? Is that, is that a yes? Joyce? Yes, okay. Bernard?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, all five, yes. For the motion, none against, and the motion carries.
And one thing, Chris, before you leave, if you could add the three waivers to the plan and the date that they were approved with those two conditions on the second waiver, if you could.
Yeah, I believe I've already done that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, Brittany, and thank you, Justin.
Okay, very good. Takes care of the new business. Onto other businesses. Anybody have any other business to bring up tonight? I guess one would be to calendar the next meeting.
So, I'm proposing a meeting on December. Let me pull up my calendar here. The last Monday in December is the twenty eighth. However, we can be flexible now that we can be even earlier if you want. I have the other plan done. It's reviewed. So, I mean, we can do the twenty first. I just have to check the town calendar to make sure anything else. I don't think any other committees are on those Mondays.
This is Joe. I'm speaking for him. I'm just going to ask the question. Bernard, are you planning to head out to Kansas City for Christmas?
Thanks, Joe, for asking. The way things are going, I don't think so.
Okay.
But I appreciate your asking, yes.
Sure.
So, so I personally am good with the twenty eighth. I can't do the twenty first, however. I have a previous obligation.
Joyce, how do you feel?
I'm free. Free the one.
Okay. Bernard, do you have any preferences?
No, I don't. If, if you ask me my choice, I probably would go with the twenty eighth first and the twenty second second, but I want to accommodate Joe as well.
Well, I, yes, thank you. I, I appreciate that. I mean, Zach, do you foresee any issues? I mean, without me?
No, the
You have an even number.
Yeah, the one plan you can't even vote on anyway, it's because you'll be voting on it as a commissioner.
I would be abstaining, okay.
Same on that one. And also, the addition plat for rudders, it is extremely simple. We only have like one or two conditions. It's
Okay.
cut and dry.
Probably one of those things where we kind of have to do it. It sounds like.
Yes, it's basically going to give them more street frontage, and it makes sense. It's just a really weird, if you guys have a second, I can try to pull it up quick.
I mean, I don't want to hold up everyone else's evening, just because I, I won't be around. But I'll, I'll, I'll leave that open to everyone else in the chair.
Let me, is it okay if I pull it up everybody real quick?
I'm okay with it.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, good.
While he's pulling it up, Mr. Chairman, are we tied to this time period? Could it be earlier in the day?
Oh, geez. I think the board of commissioners actually asked to approve a time change.
I see. Because if you, if you're just talking about a couple of items, why couldn't we do it at noon or one o'clock?
No, unfortunately, we can't do that. We have to have the public to be able to give.
Alright.
That's true.
Okay, here we go. I found it. So, let me share my screen quick. Okay, so here's, here's the very simple plan here. So, here, if you can see my, my mouse, here is the rudders parcel. Here is the state administration parcel, and if you look at the, the key up here, I'm sorry, let me pull this over. So, here's the rudders parcel, here's state highway administration. SPT Land, that's actually the owner of Jubilee. He owns the rudders parcel currently, and he also owns this parcel that's being talked about next month. So, right now, it's a really awkward weird parcel in front of both of the rudders parcel and the state highway administration. They're cutting it at the lot, at the lot line here. This portion, which is lot A technically, goes to rudders, and this portion is going to SHA. So, it's, all it is is just cutting it and giving it the land to those two entities.
Giving the land, but not making any development on it?
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, the development's still going to be on there, which was, which you approved with the rudders.
Yeah, okay.
Sidewalks and everything. We're actually talking with attorney right now about that. We're, we're making sure which I don't think they will do it, but we're just protecting the town to make sure there's, they can't come back and say they don't have to do the, the corrections now, because the
Okay.
We will have that worked out by next year.
Okay. That sounds simple.
Yeah, and we have no access to it.
Okay. Okay. So, it sounds very like we're getting a consensus here that we would do the meeting on the twenty eighth. Am I, am I correct in that? We, we'll miss, we'll miss Joe, but we'll still have a quorum of four people. So, we would be able to conduct the business. Are we okay with that? Anybody saying no? Okay, I think we got, I got most of the heads shaking, yes. So, let's go for the twenty eighth of December. We're going, we're going to set a record here for a meeting like
It's been a busy year. We had, we're going to have, I'm working on the annual report right now, the twenty twenty annual report, and we've had ten items this year, so.
I was going to say, it was like ten out of twelve.
It's been crazy.
Wow.
Which is good, which is good.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. Okay, anybody got anything else? For the good of the cause. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
Do I have a second?
This is Joe, I second.
Joe seconds. All those in favor, raise your hand. All in favor? One, two, three. Okay, we got them all. Five say yes, so the meeting is adjourned. And I'll say to have a happy holiday.